Please stand by. You should be all set.
Okay, we're on you.
We are good to go whenever you're ready.
Okay, all right, let's start. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the OGA committee meeting of September seventh, twenty twenty-three. I'm the chairman of the committee, Saul Silverstein. We have with us. Assistant Coordinator Chris Kelly, Committee Member Mike Muddit, Committee Member Gary Del Piano, Coordinator Ron Davis, Recording Secretary Marlene Silverstein. First item on our agenda tonight is questions and comments. Does anyone have any? No, okay, let's move on. We can't, I included the minutes, we can't approve them since we don't have a quorum, but those are the last minutes where we actually had a quorum. So we'll just table that again. Budget wise, I did send out a copy of the budget. What it shows is the new fiscal year that we're currently in. And as of yesterday, we have spent seven point seven percent of the miscellaneous supplies and expense budget. Nothing of the recording secretary, since we haven't had a meeting in the new fiscal year until tonight. Twenty-five percent of the coordinator salary budget, seventeen percent of the assistant coordinator, and about little under one percent of the camera operators budget, total of nineteen point nine percent of the current fiscal year budget. The second page was the closing budget for last year. We did have an overrun last year due to the heavy amount of effort that is put in covering bicentennial activities. As you can see, we overran the the assistant coordinator budget by about eight thousand dollars. But the town did cover that. I had made the finance director aware of the issue before we had the big overrun, and he said, just keep going. So we did. Any questions on the budget? Nope. Okay. Next item is coordinator reports. We have two. We have the July report. In July, statistics wise, I see a hundred forty-nine live meetings hits on Tellview. And eighteen VOD hits on YouTube. There were five hundred and sixty-one hits for both live and video on demand. Things that happened during the month. The Tricaster, we had talked about this
last month.
In July, in the July meeting, we talked about the Tricaster had failed. And under our service contract, the vendor sent a new, a new copy, a new one to replace the failed one. And the new one had solid state drives in it rather than regular hard drives. Chris had negotiated that. And the new one worked and then it failed. So then we called again and they sent us a second replacement. And that one was working last, last time I spoke to Chris, I'm assuming it's still working.
It's still working.
Okay, so the third time's the charm, I guess. Chris also updated firmware on our hypercasted to allow automatic program scheduling. Now, that's, that's, that's something that I think Gary asked about last month, last time we had a meeting, if we could have the program scheduling come up between programs. And I did see it working. I'm assuming still doing it.
It's still working, yeah.
Were there to be a, a name of the individual who was in one of those shows at the end as well, not just at the beginning?
Yeah, I, it's a little bit of a task to do that. So I'm trying to figure out an easy way that without having to basically re-upload thirty-seven interviews. You know, it's, it could, it could take a while to do that, but I understand why you want to do that. So I want to figure out a way, you know, we can make that happen.
Okay. So you're working on it? That's all I.
Working on it, yeah. I'm gonna try to do that.
Okay. All right. Also during July Comcast reached out to OGA about adding OGA programming to their offerings when they install a fiber optic system, fiber optic internet and TV service in Orange. There'll be a little more about that later. And then I did submit before the July fifteen deadline, the, the grant application to the Cable Advisory Council. So those are the highlights of the July report. The August report, terms of statistics, Tellview hits a hundred and eighty live video on demand on Tellview, twenty hits, and on YouTube, six hundred and ninety-four combined video on demand and live. During the month, Comcast again reached out to us, this time to discuss details about bringing the service, their service into the OGA studio. And Chris says that it will happen in the next couple of months according to Comcast. The other thing that happened was the last time we met, Mike Muddit brought up an issue one customer was having with the Optimum Fiber Optics Service where the customer could not access OGA. And both Ron and Chris did contact the Senior Director of Government Affairs at Altice. Her name is Esme Lombard, and she did call Ron back, but what's written here is although Ms. Lombard did call Mr. Davis, she did not offer any clarity on the issue. She said customers with the fiber service should be able to receive OGA, but did not tell them how. So I don't have the fiber service, but I tried an experiment. I ha, I, I have an Android tablet and Optimum has an app. I downloaded the Optimum app to that tablet, and I pulled up the channel guide. And by the way, you have to use the app in your home where we, where I guess you have Optimum service, Optimum Internet Service. So I used the app in my house. I pulled up the guide on the app, and it showed all the program channels, and it let me start any program that I have subscribed to, except the peg stations. What it showed me was a background image of a still of the program I tried to watch, like, say, I want to watch Channel Two or Channel Three, it showed me a background image, a static image with a start arrow in the middle of the image. I press on a start arrow and the program starts playing, and I can watch any channel that I'm subscribed to. But when I go to the peg stations, it gives me the still background image, but no start arrow. There's no way to start a video. There is a record button, but I don't want to, I don't have a DVR and I don't want to record anything, and I don't have DVR service if you have to pay for it. So I didn't press that. So Esme Lombard had sent a letter to Chris when he called her saying, hey, I spoke to Ron, go speak to Ron. So I replied to that letter and told her exactly what I just told you, and I have not heard back from her since. So I don't know if she's looking into it or not. And I don't know if my problem is the same problem that the people who have the fiber optics service from Optimum are having, but there is some sort of issue with the Optimum app at least that I'm aware of. And I don't know if the issue that Mike found with the customer who had a problem, apparently that customer has fiber optic service, and they, they give that customer a little box that, I, I guess it's like a Roku box or something like that. It's not a Roku box. It's, I guess it's an Optimum branded box. I have something similar at my vacation home and from a different service, and I know what they're talking about. So I don't know if, if you, if you found the Optimum app on that box when you were trying to investigate it, Mike, or not.
Yeah, so it's, the, the service is called Optimum Stream.
Yeah.
If you look at their website, they have the picture of the, it's, it's actually a Google box. It's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, some kind of Android app that's basically just running on a small box. But yeah, if you, there's no, there's no peg stations, they're not there. So it's, you can go through all the other stations, they just no peg. So I, I mean, I think we probably should like notify Pure at this point, just that they're no, no longer meeting their, their peg requirements.
Yeah, typically they're, it seems like government access is sort of open in the cable business. It's the last thing they think about, if they think about it at all.
So should the, I, I would, since none of us actually have access to this fiber optics service with Optimum Stream, we're kind of like shooting in a dark to call Pure. I, I would suspect that the customer you spoke to, if he still doesn't, cannot have access, he's the one who should contact Pure.
Okay. Can you? Yeah, Ron, if you have any contacts for customer complaints, I will send that to him. I'm sure he will be willing to write. I don't.
So you just contact that customer. If he still has the issue, he should definitely contact Pure and let them be aware of it.
Mike, I'll have to go online to Pure and they'll probably, there's, there's a way to send in your complaint online.
You got it.
Okay. Anything else on that issue or anything else? Nope. Okay, so that's the report for August. Any other questions on either of those reports?
No. You did mention that Comcast reached out to set up a time to discuss details about bringing their service to OGA.
Yep.
And I have I've been waiting for them to call me back. I, I've sent a message to them as Chairman of the Cable Advisory Council, if you don't mind me just getting all key here a little. In order to discuss with them the fact that just putting them on our system might be fine, but we put cable vision in our system, and we got a lot with it. And what have they got to offer? Basically is what I'm looking at.
Okay, well, we have AT&amp;T also. What are they offering beyond?
And they haven't touched their equipment since they put it in ten plus years ago.
Yeah.
So at least my understanding is that, that stuff still works. Like if you have Frontier's streaming service, it works.
And they let me know when it's not working. I've, I've had a lot of feedback from them, you know, over the past, like they, they definitely monitor it, so.
I'm sorry, is there anything particular that you're looking for, Ron, and what they have to offer? Beyond connecting us?
Well, let's put it this way, Cablevision has given us a, a means of streaming to the, the TV. And we'll have to be using that, by the way, for what we're shooting. Theirs will be different. I don't know what's happening with, with Soundview on the same subject, but I, they, they give us the Cable Advisory Council, they give us a hundred grand, which we all partake and get part of. They give the Cable Advisory Council a couple of grand a year. And Cablevision's been very good to us. It just seems to me like they should at least consider some of the things to help us out too. It costs monitor on these stations, and maybe a little help would be good.
Okay.
And what are you gonna do if they don't want to give you any help?
Well, we'll talk about it some more.
We, we never tested AT&amp;T for help. Now Frontier.
Yes, I got on there before I knew about it.
Well, Ron, we did discuss it at the Sback meetings, and they AT&amp;T basically wrote the law for the video streaming. And that's why they never paid anything except to Sback. They didn't, they they created the statewide council and said that's the only council we're supporting.
Oh, that's right. Boy, that was a long time ago.
So this is, this is all Cable Advisory Council stuff. And the, the only impression I had about when AT&amp;T came in, because it was an internet based, based service, they weren't really a cable company and didn't have to participate in the agreement with the cable television. So that's how they got out of it. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that Comcast will get out of it the same way.
I was about to ask, so I mean, is Comcast a statewide license? Then they're, yeah, they're probably gonna use the exact same get out of jail card there.
But again, this is all Cable Advisory Council, I think, stuff.
Yeah, but it, it comes back to us.
Yeah.
To OGA and to the other towns.
All right. Okay, well, if you find anything out, I guess you can let us.
I'll let you know.
Right. Okay. Bicentennial activities. I think we finished all the interviews. Chris?
There's one more interview that we have to finish. And that's in the works now. We, I have some dates that we're lining up to shoot a couple more areas for B-roll, and it's gonna be mostly in the town center. And we might potentially try to do some more drone footage. So that's the goal with that. And so there will be some more coming out from the bicentennial videos. And hopefully, like I know at, at the end of August, we were planning on having stuff done, but it looks like it's gonna be maybe towards the end of September now. And we're gonna be shooting, you know, throughout September, I would imagine.
So there's thirty-seven interviews that are done, basically, and up on, up on the system and up on YouTube also. How many more specific interviews are there gonna be? One, two, one, okay.
Yep.
All right. And that'll close.
Are you playing Halloween at your house tonight, or what's going on?
Oh, no, I'm, I am shooting remotely. I'm, I'm, I am, yeah, I'm offsite right now, and the lighting isn't great. There was a motion that was supposed to go on, it didn't go on, so I'm kind of stuck here, but it's okay. The screen is providing enough light to illuminate my face, so that's good.
A candle would be good.
Best lighting, you know, that I've had, I've had better lighting for sure.
All right. Okay. After that, action items. We did close one last time, it was the bicentennial one, but there's still bicentennial activity going on, but I think we got the bulk of it done since there's only. The other one that I think we could close is update the inventory to reflect the items discarded in the town attic cleanup.
That should be done, right?
I think you told me you did that, and I think you sent me the inventory list. After you, yeah. So I think that's done. I'll close that one. And then there's one contact Tellview regarding possibility of automatically generating cable casting a program schedule. We already did that. That's working. You're doing, you're broadcasting a, a schedule. So close that one too. The others have to do with an equipment schematic, which seems to be gonna be a perennial work in progress, because equipment keeps getting added and every year, right?
It's pretty much set in stone now. I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're looking to maybe switch out our Tricaster, but the wiring and everything, and the configuration is gonna be basically the same.
Yeah, okay, so. I guess when, if you, do you have the schematic done to the current status, or is that still being worked?
It's done.
It's done, okay, so. If you could send that out to everybody, I hope it's in a.
I'm not sure if I did. I might have set that out, but maybe you didn't get that yet.
I don't, I didn't get it. So if you could send that out. Please. And then the others are updating procedures. One was added procedure for recording and broadcasting virtual meetings, which you still should have, since at least we're having virtual meetings. Mostly. And update procedures for changes since publication of including the effect of switching from Discover to Tellview for streaming and VOD. So there's a bunch of procedures there that had to be updated. I don't know, are they done yet, or?
They're probably, I should review them, but I do have a, an archive of different procedures that I probably need to update slightly, but that will all be getting done throughout the next couple of months. We'll, we'll be wrapping that up.
Okay, so if you could send me the schematic as it stands and send it, I guess send it to committee, in case anyone proves it. Thank you. And I'll close the last two on the list. The other thing, just a, a note. I was at the what was now the Labor Day concert and fireworks. It was supposed to be Independence Day, but that got canceled due to weather conditions and, and smoke from Canada. And that was Saturday, last Saturday night. And Chris had, Chris had a lot of equipment there. He basically filled up back of his car to bring all the equipment he had there. And the reason he had it there was that was broadcast live, and I think that was the first time that was ever broadcast live, and it was there was a, there was a bit of a delay between what was happening and what went out on the air, but it was, I checked it on my phone, and it was working beautifully. A good job.
I did too. You did a good job.
Yeah.
We'll just, you know, try to make it better every year.
Yep. Equipment inventory, a CAC grant. I submitted it. Haven't gotten, usually you get the funds in August. Have not, it's now September, we haven't gotten the funds, I understand.
We're meeting on Monday to get the final approval from the council, and then the checks will go out. As you know, I have not been in the state of Connecticut very much over the last six weeks, so.
Yeah, so, so we should get something by the middle of the month, I'm assuming.
Anytime after Monday.
So, so this is, to me, it's like a month later than I'm used to. So normally we have to put in a final report in December. We're gonna get a month extension on that?
I'll make a decision later.
Okay. All right, because sometimes, you know, a lot of this equipment is, especially these days, a lot of it, when your order is out of stock, then you have to wait for it, and then it doesn't come in, and then I have to issue a report in December, then issue an updated report when the rest of the equipment comes in, and it's a bit of a hassle.
The only problem is I have to file my report on the grants to, to Pure by February fifteenth.
Okay.
So that's why I get, give myself two months to get the report together.
Okay. We'll try and work within the system.
Thank you.
Equipment inventory. We discussed that it's already up to date. Chris sent it out to me. Committee vacancies, I have not heard anything from the first selectman's office. Last time I saw the first selectman, he said he thought he had somebody, but that person opted out. So I'm, you know, we're kind of languishing here. Next item, input to the annual town report. So I've sent everybody a draft of the input to the annual town report that's due every September. I think it's due September thirtieth. So I sent you what I wrote. It's pretty much boilerplate. The first section just talks about OGA to the whole. The middle talks about how we do our job in terms of wiring and cabling and the equipment we have that we use. And I mentioned that we have received, since two thousand and nine, OGA has received over two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in Cable Advisory Council grant funds. And so that's money that the town did not have to spend to support us. I mentioned the live stream and video on demand and how to get at those. And then I mentioned the summary of the programs that we broadcast during the fiscal year. There was a hundred fifty-two programs, of which a hundred forty-four were board meetings and eight were special events. And then I listed pretty much the programs, all of them. And the programs are shown on Optimum TV, Channel seventy-nine, Frontier, Channel sixty, sixty-three, and on the town's webpage. I don't believe I mentioned YouTube in here. Oh, I did mention YouTube in the middle paragraph. Okay, so that's pretty much it. Anyone have any comments, changes, additions, subtractions? Normally we vote on it, but I'm just gonna submit it. Assuming we have a consensus that I could submit this.
Yes.
Members, yes, two committee members, yes. Okay, so I will, I will submit this to the town tomorrow, Monday. Thank you. And the last two items, again, things that need to be updated. First one was the program request form, and the, the update on that one was, this is if someone wants a program recorded. They, they go into Town Hall and, or go online and can pick up this form and fill out what program they want recorded and what format they want it recorded in. Or, or how, if they want to broadcast a previously recorded program, what format that program is in. And what I did was, there was the old form, the formats included Super VHS and VHS tapes, which don't exist anymore for long. So I, I took that out and I replaced that with flash drive and other. And DVD was there, I left DVD, and I don't recall if I made any other changes. I don't think I did. So that's, that form should be updated.
That was good.
Excuse me?
I said that was good. That definitely needed to be done.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm assuming, I, 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 you know, I, I and having had a chance, I'm gonna go see if I can talk to the first selectman and talk about if I need to run this by the town attorney or not to update it, or just the board of selectmen to update it. The other thing is a, a little more in depth, and that's the policies and procedures. And I sent out two versions of that. One is the existing policies and procedures with yellow highlight around things I thought needed to be changed. And I think all the things that need to be changed, when I looked at it, were in the procedures portion of the documents. And I then made a draft of what I thought that should be changed too. And I sent that out, and it, I, I use the, the, the facility in, in the Word program that lets you show the changes you made in the document. So change is usually shown in red, and if you add something or or delete something, it shows it in the right. It says this was added or deleted. So I sent that out. And Mike, a couple of meetings back, I think you said that you wanted to look it over and I thought you said you wanted to look it over, and, and I, I, I don't know if you had a chance. This, this, we've, I've sent this out before, so I know you probably got it before, so I had a chance to look at it.
I don't recall seeing that.
What?
I don't recall seeing that.
I sent it out again two days ago.
Yeah, oh, two days ago, okay.
I, no, I sent it yesterday, actually, with all the other documents for the meeting. It's there. So if you take a look at it, the, the, but the question I had, one of the questions I had was, we, we're no longer issuing VHS tapes, but we are issuing DVDs, which we have always issued, and we are now issuing flash drives if a a viewer wants a flash drive copy of a program. Now, for DVDs, we had been charging thirty-seven dollars. Or thirty dollars, no, twenty dollars, I'm sorry, twenty dollars for a DVD. And I didn't know if it should stay twenty. I put in thirty. And for flash drive, I thought thirty-seven, because thirty-seven is what we used to charge for a videotape. Now that I, I'm not sure if that's a reasonable price or not. I mean, the cost of a flash drive, which are pretty cheap these days, and there's the cost of the time of individual who is transferring the file to the flash drive or to DVD.
Yeah, I think you ought to stick with the same prices.
Yep, I would too.
Okay, so that's what's in there. Mike, if you would, put your two cents worth when you review it and let us know. And then again, I would have to, Ron, I think I would have to run the policies and procedures by the town attorney before we run it through board of selectmen, but I don't know. So I, it's another thing, if I get a chance to see Mr. Zoli, I will ask him what, what his opinion of that is. But again, I, I just appreciate getting additional feedback next month if possible, or before next month if possible, so we can, we can finish discussing it next month.
Yep, that seems fair.
Okay, and that's all I have. Does anyone have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Mike seconds with a.
I mean, but I mean, we don't have, we never had, we never, we never had a meeting technically, or official one.
Right, yeah. Anyway.
What am I doing sitting here? It's a meeting.
It's a meeting, you just can't document it, unapproved minutes. Everything's unapproved.
Right, that's all.
Vote on it. Vote on it, okay. Uh, that's it. I think, I guess we're done.
Okay.
Uh, so have a nice, have a nice September.
Nice seeing everyone. Thank you.
Chris, hang on for a second. Some questions?
Sure, sure thing. All right, take care.
And you too.
Missing you, uh, now that you're down in Florida all the time.
Where, where they lived. Where they, where your brothers and sisters were born.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Uh, our family, the Monk family. My mom and dad came from Bridgeport originally. And when they moved in to Orange, which was on the Post Road. And two of the oldest were born in.